Okay, well, welcome, everyone. Welcome to the 2022 Speak Up Newport Candidates Forum. My name is Ed Selich, and I'm president of Speak Up Newport, and I'll be your moderator this evening. We're going to do this in about one hour, about 60 minutes. Before we get started, what I'd like to do is just go over the procedures and explain to you and the candidates how we're going to proceed. So first of all, our forum's going to be different than any of the ones you've been to so far this year, I believe. We took a look at all the questions we asked two years ago. The same questions everyone's asking today. And so we decided to go with a different direction. There's not going to be one question on any city issue, whether it's traffic, the airport, homelessness, you name it. We're not going to ask any of that. What we're going to do is we're going to take a different approach here. We're going to focus on the qualifications of these candidates and their fitness to hold office. So we're going in a whole different direction here. Also, a little bit different, is that no question will be asked of more than one candidate. We want fresh answers from each question. So each candidate will get a question that's only asked of them. And I know from when I used to be up there that if you were the seventh person, you had seven minutes to think of your answer when you heard the question. So no seven minutes this time. Each candidate will have a one-minute opening and closing statement. Robin Grant, who has no opponent, has graciously ceded her time to the other candidates. And in consideration for that, we'll give her two minutes to make a statement. And then she'll leave the table and join the audience. We're interested in learning more about the candidates and how they'd exercise their duties as a member of the city council. We want to find out what the differences are in their candidacies so that you, the voters, can make the best reasoned decision you can on who to vote for. Now, all questions are going to have a one-minute time limit with a 15-second warning, and a bell will sound when the time is up. You want to hit the bell there, Debbie? That's what it sounds like, so please respect that. And Debbie Allen's going to be our timekeeper. So there's going to be four rounds of questions, seven in each round, one for each candidate. Again, no question will be asked twice, and the questions are going to be in four categories. So Kay, do you want to take this off here? All right. So we're going to have the four categories. Category number one, that's character and motivation. Category number two, it's my Vanuah white hair. Category number two, qualifications in community service. Category three, political philosophy. Category four, personal attributes. And then there'll be one final question that will be asked of all seven candidates. So if you're counting, that's 29 questions. Now, Joe Stapleton, he's a member of the Sun Board, so to be fair to all candidates, the questions will be drawn from one of these four buckets by Kay. So the questions will all be random. Some questions are easier than others, just the way that's going to be. So some's going to get easier questions than others, but it's just going to be a matter of chance. We felt this is a small penalty to pay to get unique and fresh answers for each questions as opposed to the same question being basically answered by everyone by answering the same question. Now, candidates, this is going to be a test of how quick you can think on your feet as well as giving the voters unscripted answers. So now let me introduce the candidates. On the screen behind the candidates is a map of the council districts with the name of the council of the candidates and an arrow pointing to the district seat they are contending for. District one in brown is Tom Miller and Joe Stapleton. District three in blue is Jim Mosher, Amy Peters, and Eric Wigan. District four in green is Robin Grant, who, as we said, has no opponent. And District six, in the red-orange, is Joy Brenner and Lauren Kleiman. Now, remember, you vote for one in each district, but you get to vote citywide. So no matter where you live, you get to vote for all these candidates. So with that, we're going to move on to the candidates' opening statements. So Robin, you have two minutes.
Hello, I'm Robin Grant, and I'm running for Newport Beach City Council in District Four. I'm very honored to be running unopposed for city council. I want to thank Ed Selich and the Speak Up Newport Board, of which I am a member, along with Joe Stapleton. I've had the privilege to be on this board for over 10 years and the honor to bring issues of relevance to our community for all those years. This is an amazing organization, as shown by how many people we have here tonight, and I'm very proud to be a member. Leading starts with listening. I will listen and be an independent voice on the Newport Beach City Council. My number-one commitment is to be accountable to the residents. I launched my campaign over a year ago, and I've met with hundreds of residents. The number-one question I'm asked is why I run for city council. It's an easy answer. I'm running because, like you, I care deeply about the city of Newport Beach, and I want to be a part of keeping Newport a wonderful place to live and work and recreate and visit and raise a family. A bit about my background. I've called Newport Beach home for over 35 years. I'm an attorney, a business owner, and a college teacher. I've worked more than 20 years behind the scenes to improve our city, serving five council appointments, representing first responders, local business, and community education. I've been endorsed by the Newport Beach Police, Fire, and Lifeguard Associations, dozens of mayors, Citizens of the Year, and many, many residents. I'm running out of time, so I will just say that we have critical issues in the city to resolve. They will take time and effort. There are no easy answers. I will absolutely work harder than you would possibly imagine to make sure that I stay mindful of what's needed in the city and represent you well. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, so now Robin's going to leave, and we'll just have the seven candidates that are in contention for office. So the opening statements, we'll start with Tom and just work our way down the table. Go ahead, Tom, one minute.
Good evening. So one of the opening statements in my opponent's message will be that experience matters in this upcoming election. And I agree with him 10,000% experience does. In 1985, with $800 in my pocket, I started automotive reconditioning and grew it into the largest company in the nation. And with that came experience, knowledge, wisdom, leadership. That was skill set, I believe, is what equips me with the necessary tools to represent you on city council. During my tenure there, I dealt with every regulatory agency from local, state, and federal, and I defeated them all and created a lifestyle for my family that I'm very, very proud of. One of the things that separates my opponent and myself is our position on Measure B. I took a position against Measure B. I put $45,000 of my own money to defeat Measure B. So I'm not a politician. I choose to be your public servant. And with your help, together, we can make this city an even better place to live. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you to Speak Up Newport. Thank you to Ed Selich. I am Joe Stapleton, and I've been serving on the board of Speak Up Newport for the last eight years. I've been intimately involved in the Chamber of Commerce here in Newport for the last 15 years. I was the chairman of the board. I was the skipper of the Commodores Club. Today, I'm the president and co-founder of Spinnaker Investment Group, a local wealth management firm here in Newport Beach. I've served on the Harbor Commission for the four years, and I've been serving on the Finance Committee here at the city of Newport Beach for the last six years. I'm the co-founder and chair of Newport Beach Foundation. I share this with you because experience does matter, and especially in an election like this. My focus, number one, reducing homelessness. Number two, strengthening public safety. And number three, protecting Newport Beach above all else. Preserving our open spaces, maintaining fiscal responsibility, having well-manicured streets, and certainly pushing back on Sacramento policies that threaten our quality of life. I'm not running on rebuilding Newport Beach. I'm running to keep Newport Newport. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Jim?
My name is Jim Mosher. And first, I want to assure you that, like the other males up here, I do own a jacket and a tie. And if elected, I probably would wear it to the council meetings. I chose not to wear it today. First, because I pedaled five miles here on a bicycle. And second, because I want to emphasize that the people who volunteer to be on the city council are just ordinary people like yourselves. And I hope you will not be looking for somebody who looks or acts like your normal city council person, but someone who you trust, whatever the issue of the day happens to be, that they will do the hard, unglamorous work that it takes to ask the questions that you expect the people on the council to ask. I believe I have a record of demonstrating that I am a citizen who can do that hard, unglamorous work. And for those of you who are not familiar with my record, I urge you to visit my website, jimmosher.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Amy?
Well, I find it interesting that the same questions everyone was asking of us, of candidates, two years ago are the same questions we're still having to answer. That's why I'm running, because there are issues that we need to make progress on as a city, and I think I can help with that. I feel we need to address crime. There has been so many issues. We need to support our police more. We raised our three kids in Newport Beach. I went to all the local schools. I feel like I'm qualified because I live here, and I want to listen to what the constituents want. I want to reflect what we need as a city and attack those issues. Attack the crime. It is only going up. We need to have regular people who are independent thinkers because when you bring different ideas to the table, you do find solutions. If we're all the same and all come from the same background and all trained in the same programs through the city, we're not going to have independent ideas.
Thank you, Amy.
Hi there, my name's Eric Wigan. It's an honor to be before you tonight. I'm an eight-year planning commissioner. When I came to apply for the planning commission, there was not one member of the planning commission from Districts one, two, or three. So that was what I offered to the table. Unfortunately, the council agreed and had appointed me. I'm a lifelong resident of the city. I was born at Hoag. I grew up in Dover Shores. I went to Mariners, Ensign, and Newport Harbor. Now, I'm lucky enough to have my kids get to grow up in the same exact neighborhood, go to the same exact schools, and get to experience all the same things that I got to experience. The last 20 years, personally, I've been working with local governments, with state governments, and with federal governments as my job. And I know a lot of the issues that we face and we're going to discuss here tonight are regional issues, not specific to Newport Beach. There are specific Newport Beach items, but a lot of these issues can be addressed regionally. And with my experience that I can bring to the table, I think I can help deliver the goods and resources to our city and get the benefits that we are deserving.
Thank you, Eric. Joy?
Hi, everyone, I'm Joy Brenner. I am currently serving as the District Six City Council member. I have lived here for 60 years. I am old, so we don't need to talk about that. We have to laugh. We have to laugh. And anyway, so I have lived here forever, and I was involved in student government at CDM High School. I was involved in the PTA. I was on the Parks Commission when I was a young mom. I founded, along with Phil Sansone, the CDM Residents Association over 30 years ago because he said, "I need to know what my residents are thinking." And I have followed that rule ever since. So my goal is to restore citizen-driven government to Newport Beach because that's not what we have right now.
Hey, thank you, Joy. Lauren?
Thank you, Ed, and Speak Up Newport, for the opportunity to participate in this forum. Over the last several years, frustrated by issues like homelessness and supportive care homes, neighbors and many of my parent peers have been urging me to run because they know that I have a proven record of getting things done. Though I did not live under the flight path, I worked tirelessly on the effort. I spearheaded to get the airlines to the table to be better neighbors to our city. As a founding board member of the Newport Beach Foundation, I started a parent education series to help parents navigate through the difficult issues facing families today. Neighbors elected me to my HOA board to address their desire for better security. In the countless hours of research I undertook to implement the best action plan, I was repeatedly told by consultants, "Just do everything you can to protect your own home." This is not how I'm wired. I want what's best for the community, which is why I have dedicated so much of my time to public service in our city. I wouldn't put myself and my family through this process if I didn't believe that I could do more to preserve quality of life for every family and resident. I've demonstrated strong leadership in every aspect of my commitment to this community, which is why I have earned the unanimous support of my planning commissioner peers to serve as first woman chair in 27 years and our police and fire associations.
Thank you, Lauren. All right, we got that out of the way. So now we're going to go on to the questions. Candidates, if you don't like the questions that you get, don't blame me. Blame Kay. I'm just asking them. I'm just asking them. Well, wait. You're drawing them too soon. So the first one's going to be for Tom. So Vanna, mix them all up there. Okay, Tom. This is a good one. So how much time can you commit daily to city council service? And what do you envision your daily routine to be for discharging the role of a city council member?
That's actually a perfect question. Thank you for pulling that. When I first made a decision to throw my name in the hat, I had an organization with 850 people. And my wife said, "You don't have the time to do this." I since sold that company, and now I have nothing but time. And I since have found that this is more than a full-time job. I'm literally spending 16, 18 hours a day just on the campaign trail. So what my typical day will be, some of the pledges that I make is I will listen, I will be available, and I will get back to you. I have an open-door policy at my home. I live on 1808 West Oceanfront, and you're all welcome at any given time. And I know my wife gets upset with that. And I truly, truly am sincere about that. This is about being my voice for you. It's not about me being my voice. It's let me serve you. And I'm super excited about the opportunity to be your public servant. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom. Remember, this category is character and motivation. So our next question will go to Joe Stapleton.
I have all the time to serve the city.
So, Joe, what does governing of Newport Beach mean to you? And how do you envision your role as a council member?
So I've been around. I've been endorsed by almost a dozen former mayors in the city of Newport Beach. This isn't a dream for me. This is something I've been doing for the last 16 years. If you look at my community service and my record, I understand what it's going to take to be involved in the city. I will be one of the few, I'm definitely one of the few candidates up here that's got any experience on the harbor. My passion for Newport Beach is whenever I travel the world, I've been to all 50 states, I've been to 25 countries, and I can't wait to come home. And that's not by mistake or accident. It's incredible leadership from individuals, and I look forward to continuing to serve the city like I have.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, the next question will go to Jim Mosher. Thank you. Oh, this is a perfect one for you, Jim. So define success as an elected official. And how does that apply to a city council member?
Thank you, Kay. First of all, we do not elect council members to act as individuals. We elect them to act collectively. The only action they can take is at the noticed city council meetings by a majority vote of the council. So I think success for a council member is to have the skill to convince their colleagues to their way of thinking and get the vote that they hope and think is the right vote. That is my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. So the next question will go to Amy Peters. Thank you. Amy, so what unique skills do you bring to the position of city council member? And how will they help them if you're elected to the city council?
Well, I have been involved in charity groups in our community for as long as I've lived here, over 40 years, but the last 20 years as an adult. We started a science foundation at our school, and we were able to bring funding from all sorts of people. And Boeing was one of them to reapply the science education that was taken away from us by the schools. Our business is a manufacturing consulting firm, so we communicate with businesses and we... Sorry, I'm a little bit rattled by this format. And we are able to go into companies and assess what the issues are, and then bring in groups or accountants to help us streamline their process and get them ready for sale. I would talk to everyone at the city manager's office. And anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. So the next question will be for Eric Wigan. We should have a Karnak kind of routine going here. Eric, oh, this is a good one. What personal attribute or character trait of yours most qualifies you to be elected to city council? And as a counter to that, what least qualifies you? This is personal attribute or character trait.
I think I'm a bit of a procrastinator, so let's start with the bad first. So sometimes I do delay a little bit on some of the items that are sometimes before me, more in a personal way than a city way. But that would be my faults, maybe. But as far as what I do well is I think I'm good at working with others and being a team player, but also forming consensus. I have a record on the planning commission of having formed consensus on a lot of controversial items, or at least done a decent job, I feel, of meeting with the applicant and then meeting with those on the opposition and forming the best decision that is for the residents of our city. So I think that that would be my strong suit.
Great. Thank you, Eric. So our next question is for Joy Brenner. Joy, I hope you'll like me after this question. If you are not elected to city council, what specifically will you do after the election to contribute to the quality of life in Newport Beach?
Oh, wow. I've been contributing for 60 years to the quality of life in Newport Beach. And I think if I don't win this election, I'm going for a trip.
All right. Well put, well put. So our last question is for Lauren. So Lauren, how would you describe the difference between you and your opponent? Please be specific. These are wide questions, folks.
Well, so obviously, from all the cheering here, we know how much Joy is adored. Joy and I have always had a great relationship and get along well. And I have the utmost respect for her. I would say intentions are similarity. We both have great intentions. We both have a love for this city. And the thing that sets us apart is not just the voices that we are listening to and the people that we are hearing from, but the ability to forge relationships in order to be effective. And that's really the most important thing. As we've heard, you know, the consensus on council, it's a body of seven people, and it's not just one voice. So it is about having those relationships, not just on the council, but in the city.
Thank you, Lauren. So our next category is qualifications in community service. And this last time we went down the row, we're going to start mixing it up a little bit. So our first question in this category will go to Jim Mosher. You're getting the good ones, Jim. Which current or former city council member would you describe as your biggest mentor? And if there is no council member who is your mentor, who else in your life is your biggest mentor for running?
That's a good response, but it's not the one I will give.
You tried.
Someone actually asked me that question of which council members I most admire. And they're not necessarily the ones who do the homework like I think they should do. The two I most admire are both women. One is Nancy Gardner, who I think did a very good job. And I am aligned in my thinking with her, although she did preside over some revisions to our city charter that I did not agree with. And the second is Joy, who is... And those are actually the two that I ever voted for with enthusiasm. So those are my two mentors.
Thank you, Jim. So our next question will go to Amy Peters. Okay, Amy, who are your supporters? What have you done to obtain their support? And what are they doing to support your candidacy?
My supporters are my family and my very close friends. And they have called and walked and knocked and told everyone they know that I have a high moral and ethical standard and that I'm an independent voice. And if the last three years haven't shown us anything, it's that we need a strong local government that's going to advocate for our city and for the things we need and fight back against Sacramento and our federal government because we know what we need in Newport, not anyone else.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, our next question will go to Eric Wigan. So Eric, what city documents, plans, or products would be most useful to you in guiding your decisions that you make on the city council?
You gave me that one.
Vanna did.
Yeah.
I'm just reading it.
That's a Jim Mosher question. You know, you stumped me. I don't really have... I will say that I think that our city's website is very in-depth, and it has a lot of community information. It has a very user-friendly way about it that I do appreciate. I actually pulled up a lot of documents from there. You can pull up EIRs. You can look at our city's construction, what's happening in your neighborhood. So I do think that that is a great set of documents that can help us determine, as residents, a lot of information and get what we need at our fingertips. So sorry, that's not probably the best answer for that. But I do think that we have done a good job of communicating via our website, and a lot of information is there.
Okay, thank you, Eric. So our next question will go to Joy Brenner. Oh, this is an easy one for you, Joy. So prior to announcing your candidacy, what is the most significant thing you have done to prepare yourself to serve on the city council?
Whoa. I think probably the thing that... Well, okay, there's two. I was engaged for 10 years to my late fiance, who served 16 years on the city council and was the mayor, and John Cox. And I think maybe that relationship was the most significant thing because we talked all the time about city issues. It was interesting to both of us. So I feel like I had a mentor in him that could really... Of course, he really did not want me to run for city council either. But I feel like it really gave me some in-depth knowledge that I would not have had otherwise because when you get here, it's a lot different from what you think it's going to be like when you're running.
Okay, thank you, Joy. So our next question goes to Lauren Kleiman. So Lauren, what area of local government interests you the most? And how would you apply that interest on the city council?
Well, obviously, I am very well-versed in both. Well, obviously, I am very well-versed in both. Our land use issues in the city, and we have a lot going on with all of the housing mandates. That's first and foremost, and one of the areas that I am probably the most qualified to help the city address how to develop defensive strategies in pushing back against those Sacramento mandates. And in addition to that, airport has always had a special place in my heart since it was the first board that I served on in the city and, you know, saw actual community efforts and results. But I would like to, if I were to get on, get involved in understanding our finances better and get on our finance committee as well, if possible. That's a lot of different boards and commissions and things to get involved in, but that's my answer.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. Okay, the next question is for Tom Miller. So Tom, which current or former city council member, not me, would you reach out to first for general city council advice and why?
Oh, this is an easy one. So the incumbent is Diane Dixon, and she's endorsed me. I can't tell you the number of hours Diane and I have spent together and the number of information that she has handed me about our city. The education I've learned over the last year and a half has been invigorating and an unbelievable experience. I've read through our approved budget for 2022 and 2023, three times. I know numbers like I never dreamt I would know, and I think that's necessary as being a city council member to properly equip me. The $404 million budget, this is a big city, and big decisions need to be made, and I'm prepared to make those decisions.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Well, the last question in this category goes to Joe Stapleton.
Where am I going on vacation after the campaign?
Well, Joe, you should be able to answer this one. What other civic involvement have you had, here or elsewhere, and how has that prepared you to be on the city council?
All right, how do I do this? It's going to be like an auction. I'm going to try to get through all of them. The Chamber of Commerce, the Harbor Commission, leadership tomorrow, I served as the chair, Newport Beach Foundation, I started the largest young professional society in Orange County called the Elite OC. I served on the Pacific Club Board, I've served on the Lot Trophy Board, I've been serving on the Board of Speak Up Newport, I serve on the Board of New Majority. I got to say, I've really modeled my service and commitment to the city from two people I just absolutely love and adore more than anything, and they're no longer with us, but Marion Bergerson and Danny O'Neil, who I consider my biggest mentors in my life, and they showed me firsthand what community service means and what makes a city like Newport Beach so much different than everyone else. It's all of you being here tonight, caring about local politics. So you can go to my website, stapletonfornewport.com, it's all listed there, but certainly, community service has been something I've been extremely passionate about since the moment I moved here 16 years ago. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. So we'll move on to our third category, political philosophy. So, and again, we're mixing them up, so the first question will go to Joy Brenner.
It's like the doctor saying hmm when he's examining you.
So, so Joy, what, if anything, would you like to see changed in the way city council meetings are administered and run? And what do you like least in the way they are run now?
Whoa, this is a great question, because I've already got a list. The first thing I'd like to see is we need to bring everything that can come out of closed session out to the public. Sure, we have to talk about some numbers and things that are, that are private, but everything that can be talked about in front of the public must be talked about there. There's another thing that I plan to change, if I have the opportunity, is our A1 policy says that you, a council member, can only put an item on the agenda if they have two other council members vote with you to do that. This is absurd, because every council member represents a district, and every council member has a number of citizens that they interact with. And if they want something on the agenda, it needs to be on the agenda, and we need to talk about it, and whether we agree or not.
Thank you, Joy. Our next question will go to Lauren Kleiman. So Lauren, do you have a plan for town halls once you're elected? And if you do, where will you have them and how often?
That's a great question. Obviously, we have a number of council people currently who have kind of continued in the tradition of holding those town halls. I think that a lot of people in the community have the expectation that that will continue and should continue, and it's a great opportunity to hear from our department heads or from those involved in whatever the most relevant and issues of concern are at the moment. I can't really say specifically how often they should be held. I think it depends, again, on what's happening, and I do think our city does a tremendous job. Our staff always addresses issues as they're coming up, whether it be e-bikes or fractional housing, and they're fantastic at getting those in front of the residents and hearing from them as soon as they are hearing concerns, so that people can have their voices heard and hear back from the city about how they're going to address it.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. So our next question will go to Tom Miller. All right, Tom, we're toughening him up on you a little bit here. So Newport Beach City Council is a nonpartisan office. How will you reconcile your political beliefs with solutions to our city's problems when they may not align well with your political beliefs?
I absolutely love this question. I embrace it. My whole message is about uniting. You know, our federal government is telling us that we need to unite at the highest level, but truly, we need to unite within our community. And as I knock on doors and I learn what people's problems are, and they'll ask me my party affiliation, I talk to them about, let's unite, let's talk, we could all agree that we want public safety, we want a safe, clean environment. There's so many things that we could agree on. It's not, whether it's a partisan party or not, there's not going to be an R or D next to my ballot. Let's unite, let's get through this together, let's work together and start a movement with our community that we, that I can only hope and pray will spread to surrounding communities, spread to the state level, and hopefully, national. And let's start that movement here in Newport Beach.
Thank you, Tom. The next question will go to Joe Stapleton. All right, Joe, what is your campaign strategy and how are you executing it?
Yeah, so for those of you who don't know, I ran against Diane Dixon eight years ago. Four months before the election, I backed out of the race. I sat down with Diane at Woody's Diner and said, you know what? You're going to serve the community great, we have a similar philosophy and beliefs. And I stepped aside and Diane Dixon ran unopposed, and she won, and I supported her in both of her re-elections, including her assembly races. What I did since then is only get more engaged in the community of Newport Beach and get more involved in what's going on in the city. So our campaign is all about what's best interest of the residents and being independent thought leaders. So for me, I said that with my consultant a year and a half ago, and said, how much money do you think it's going to take to run a race like this in Newport Beach? She said, maybe $125,000. Today, I've raised $325,000 from over 700 donors in a city like this. So I tell you that because unfortunately, that doesn't seem right to me. It doesn't seem that in a District 1 city council race, someone like me who's been invested in this community for the last 16 years has to go and raise over $300,000 to compete in a city council race. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next question will go to Jim Mosher. So Jim, what are the fundamental tools you possess for decision, for a decision-making role in the city council in Newport Beach, and how would you use those tools?
Yes, as some of my colleagues said, this is a particularly easy question. I have since 2009 been researching that goldmine of information that exists on our city website in the form of minutes and agendas back to the founding of the city. And I probably have a unique ability of anybody up here to research the questions that come before the city council and question whether the staff is accurately portraying what the history of those matters is and what prior decisions were, and also attempting to do that, looking at other cities to compare our cities to those. I have long, tedious experience in doing that long, tedious work that I think council members all need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Our next question goes to Amy Peters. So Amy, what is the most difficult question you could be asked about your campaign, and what is your answer?
What my husband's going to do when I'm doing all this work for city council? He's already asked me that, because he thinks, when I first told him I was going to run, he said, well, we just got rid of our three kids. We're empty nesters, so I've looked for another job. I'm putting aside my work commitments, and I'd like to serve our city. And as we have learned from all of these forums, this is a full-time job, so I'm not sure what he's going to do. Maybe I'll get him a dog, a puppy, I'm not sure, but something like that.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, and our last question in this category goes to Eric Weigand. So Eric, how will you resolve conflicts between what needs to be done and what most residents think you should do?
That's a good question, because on the planning commission, I run into that often. There are financial contributors, there are, in the city of Newport Beach, we have a very educated population, and they also carry a significant amount of wealth. So those decisions that we make up here at the dais are often influenced by money. So you have to look at what is best for the city of Newport Beach. I have a proven record of, at the planning commission, of sitting down with those who carry the wealth on one side, and they're the applicants, and potentially carry the wealth on the other side, that are the residents or the opposition to that application. And what I feel that I've done very well of is sitting down with both sides and formulating that decision and voting what's best for, for our city.
Thank you, Eric. Before I go on to the next category, I want to thank you all for coming here. We've got a big crowd here. We've got, I think, 115 people watching on Zoom, and we're being broadcast on Newport Beach TV. And this video of this event will be available on the city's website, it'll be replayed on NBTV, it'll be on the Speak Up Newport website, and if none of that works, go to YouTube. Find anything on YouTube. All right, so now we're going to go to the last category, which is personal attributes. And the first question will go to Eric Weigand. So Eric, what is your ultimate political objective? And how does, how does being on the city council achieve you, assist you in achieving that?
So for the last eight years, I've worked for State Senator Patricia Bates. She's running for supervisor, a little plug there. I've had an opportunity to see firsthand a member of the legislature work with both sides of the aisle. I also worked for Assemblyman Jim Silva, who was supervisor here in Newport Beach for a long time, and both of their political styles and philosophies have been very similar and have shaped the way that I am, who I am, as a, I guess, an assistant or a staff member to those members of the legislature. They are types of individuals who work with both sides of the aisle that don't just throw a grenade in a room and run away and let somebody else pick up the mess. They sit down and get dirty, roll up their sleeves, and tackle the issue. And I think that they have helped guide me for an understanding of what city governance is about. They both came from city governance, they did amazing jobs in their cities, and I think that I'm well-qualified, learning from the best of the best.
Thank you, Eric. So our next question will go to Lauren Kleiman. So Lauren, how would you engage more residents in the decision-making process, and what techniques would you employ?
Well, as I said earlier, I do think that the city does an incredible job of offering opportunities to engage the community on just about every issue that, that we're facing in the city. That being said, if you, and I'm sure that all of you do, attend some of these forums, you'll notice that many of the same people attend each and every one of those. What I would love to see is for us to reach beyond those of you who have been so passionate and so vocal and really get to hear from our other residents. But I do understand, of course, people have busy lives, and I know one of the main reasons that I'm running is because the parents, my fellow peers and parents, they don't have the time to go to these things, and they want a government that can make the decisions that reflect their desires for the community and their interests without having to show up.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. So the next question goes to Jim Mosher. Okay, Jim, what should the relationship be between the local business community and a council member, and how would you establish or guide that relationship?
This one is a slightly awkward question for me, because I stated at the previous forum that my view of government is that the people we elect are there to represent the residents, not the businesses. And so I would want to make sure that what the business wants is what the residents want, and to try to mediate between the two, and that is about the best I can answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. So the next question will go to Tom Miller. Thank you. Okay, we want to know something about your interests. So what city and regional committees are you interested in serving on, and how many do you believe that you could effectively be able to serve on?
Well, my passion lies in two areas, finance and homeless. I have a finance background from running my business for 37 years, and I have a passion for homeless, and it was accelerated when I spent five hours at the Bridge Homeless Shelter in Costa Mesa a few weeks ago. It was life-changing. I met the two directors there. We are very much aligned in how we feel we can improve our homeless problem. As I knock on doors, our homeless issue is number top three in our community, and I think, I think collectively, we're never going to eliminate it, but we could definitely improve it. And I'd love to be a major part of that, as well as the finance committee, because we're talking about dollars and tax dollars, and that's critical to the success of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So the next question goes to Joe Stapleton. So Joe, why are you running for city council, and what factors are motivating you to do so?
I mean, this is really easy. In 2013, I was in the Boston Marathon. I was four minutes from the finish line when the bombs went off. It was at that moment, my life changed from ambition to contribution. I've spent every moment since that day being the best person I can be, but knowing that when I leave this planet, it's not about how much money I made, it's about the impact I had in my local community. I don't have enough money or resources or connections to potentially affect what's going on at state level or federal level, but I absolutely love the city of Newport Beach, and I'm going to do all I can to continue the legacy and make it as great as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next question will go to Amy Peters. So Amy, how many hours a week do you expect the position of a city council member to take, and how many hours do you have to give to that position?
Well, since I'm getting my husband a puppy, I have an unlimited amount of hours. I am always available to my children by phone, and since all three of them are on the East Coast, they take a lot less time. But it's, it's a job that's going to be the hours it needs to be. And I feel like we need to give a voice to every voter in our great city. And to do that, that means we have to be And to do that, that means we have to be available and we have to reflect what those voters want in council chambers. And to do that, I believe I need to have town halls, coffee dates. We have some of the best restaurants in the world in Newport Beach and I don't think that's overstating it. And I think that we are doing what we need to do and I am willing to do it.
Okay, thank you, Amy. So our last question in this category goes to Joy Brenner. Okay, Joy. Joy, so some people speak of old Newport and young Newport and the change that is occurring in the community. Do you believe the city is changing? And if so, what is a council member's role in that change?
Absolutely. I've seen it change over the last 60 years and I loved it when I was young and I lived here with my parents. It was wonderful back then, but it's wonderful now, too. And we have to just be open to the change and make sure that the change is done as responsibly and thoughtfully and with consideration for the people who are here and the traffic and all that. There's a lot of things to consider, but you know, when you go around the world and you see other places, I keep thinking I'll find someplace I'd like to live better. And I think we all think that sometimes and we come back and we go, this is it. It's the best place there is to live. So it's our responsibility to just make sure that the change comes about as thoughtfully and responsibly as possible.
Okay, thank you, Joy. Okay, so before we move on to the question for all seven candidates, would you give a big hand to my able assistant, Eric? All right, so we have time for the one question that's gonna go to all the candidates. We think this is a serious question and today's, Joe actually touched on it a bit in one of his responses, but it's how expensive these council campaigns have become for local government. And so I think this has been asked in other forums and we didn't want to repeat questions, but we still felt it was important enough that it should be asked. So this is gonna go to every candidate. I'm gonna start with Lauren at the end and work their way down this direction. So the question is, how much money have you raised? How much have you loaned yourself? Who are your biggest contributors? And how are you spending your campaign funds?
I think at this point, I've raised about 50, I don't know, between 55 and 60,000 either raised or pledged. And the donations, contributions are coming from anyone from friends and family to business members in the community and beyond. And my expectation is that I will spend it on ways to get my message out to our local voters. You know, signs, walk pieces, the same things that everyone else is doing. I've already started knocking on doors. That's the most effective way to hear from each of the residents that I can get to in the amount of time that I have.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Okay, Joy.
How much have I raised and how do I plan to spend it? Four years ago, I was told I had to raise $120,000 to run for city council. And I didn't have a consultant and I raised about $100,000 and it was just grassroots and we spent it just getting the message out there and people seem, it seemed to resonate with people. This year, I've raised about 70,000. It will be spent mostly just, there are not going to be any signs on utility poles put up by companies that, the only signs I care about are the ones in people's yards that indicate that people are supporting me. I think it's really important, though, that we look at people's campaign contributions and see where their support comes from. Because if you've got a lot of money coming from out of town, from big investors and people that you don't even know how they're connected to Newport Beach, it's a concern to me. And it is a concern as far as voting and what you have to be recused on when you're on the council, because a lot of people do not recuse themselves when I think they need to.
Okay, thank you, Joy. Eric?
I've raised $65,000, zero dollars in loans. My wife would shoot me if I did anything that spent her own money. Where I went to ask for the dollars initially was my Christmas card list. So friends and family and people I've worked with over the years. So I guess my wife's grandma is my top contributor. You know, she loves us, so I guess that means something. You know, Councilman Avery did a max out check. Jean Watt did a max out check. Diane Dixon just sent out a letter to her entire database saying that she supports me. So you know, it's a universal kind of group. I plan on spending my money, just like everyone else here does, but I have a background in campaigns, per se, and so I understand where I can spend my money, cut corners, where I need to cut corners and get my message out the most effectively.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Hey, Amy?
Well, I've raised about $600 to date. I'm kinda like Jim here. I wanna put my ethics on display. And I believe we need to not defund our police, but we need to defund politics. We need to have community representatives who are beholden to you guys. Not someone in Sacramento, not someone in Washington DC, not someone in another city in Orange County. If you expect the people to represent you on the dais, then people in your community need to vote for you, not based on money. I'm not gonna be a career politician. I don't believe in career politicians. I feel like that's what's gotten us to where we are in this country right now. Congressmen who somehow can afford million-dollar homes when their salary is $140,000 a year. If we don't start locally and elect local people to represent us, we are never gonna fix this.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Jim?
Thank you. We didn't get a chance to do much of an introduction, but my background, excuse me, is as a scientist and specifically an experimental scientist. So I'm doing this little experiment to see if it is possible to run for local office without the entanglement of contributions. My campaign is minimalist and self-funded. My initial expense was $12 for a Google website. Since then, I've spent about $20 printing out at the library the handouts that are available outside. And on that website, I got some interest from people wanting yard signs to show support for me. And I am processing in order to do that, which will cause me to have to suspend about $1,000. And that is, I think, the extent of the expenditures. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Joe?
So I manage money for a living, I promise you. I didn't want to run for city council to raise money. We're going to spend over a million dollars in District One Newport Beach City Council race. And who I feel the worst for is for you guys, because your mailboxes are gonna be just beaten. A lot of mail coming through with everything that's going on. I got in this race because I wanted to continue to serve the city that's been so great to me. Today, I've raised $320,000 from 700 donors all over the city, from, I mean, everybody from the dozen former mayors that I have, business owners, everybody who continues to support my campaign. The good news is, I've been intimately involved in this city for 16 years. So when I decided to step up and run, I had some incredible people willing to step up and support me financially and make sure that continues to be, Newport Beach continues to be the way that we all love it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Tom?
So this is a great question because Team Newport has been spreading nasty rumors about me, that I'm trying to buy the election. I just moved into Newport. Truth is, I've lived here since December 2015 and I love this city. Secondly, trying to buy the election. If I was trying to buy the election, I would have supported Measure B, because that's what that was all about, moving into the community and buying the election. Here's my position on raising money. I don't wanna spend $500,000 on winning this seat, but I'm gonna do what it takes because this race is critical to our city. And my position on fundraising is, I'm not gonna chase the large donations, the max-out donors. Give me a little bit and then write a bigger check to the animal shelter, to the Oasis Senior Center, to the police, fire, and lifeguard. Write them a big check on my behalf. That's what's more important to me. I can assure you, I'm not trying to buy this election. I wanna work for it and I'm gonna work hard and I promise you that.
All right, so with that, we've gone through all of our questions and we're at time for the candidates' closing statements, just about on schedule, running a little bit long. So we'll start off with Lauren and work our way down the table in this direction. One minute each for your closing statement.
Thank you. Well, this was the interesting forum that you promised it to be, Ed. I'll just say this, government's response to COVID showed us how much can change in a year, let alone in a four-year council term, and how important it is to elect strong local leaders to represent us. Where we are all aligned, as I said earlier, is our love for Newport and our desire to take back local control from Sacramento. There's no substitute for listening and community collaboration, but leadership requires action, solutions, and the ability to forge relationships in order to be effective. As a planning commissioner, a lawyer, a businesswoman, a board member, a neighbor, and most importantly, a mom, people turn to me to get things done. I'm running for city council because we need an effective leader whose policies are in line with Newport Beach core values so that we can protect what's great about Newport Beach.
Thank you, Lauren.
The most important thing to me for the next four years is that we get independent council members who listen to the community and vote on each individual issue by itself. We have had a block on the council that votes together. They know how they're going to vote every time. They don't have to even communicate with each other. They know that they're voting together. And consequently, you can't be listening to every public comment that comes to city council and still evaluating what you think about that issue if you've got your mind made up on how that vote's going to go already. So it is critically important that we get individuals who have the integrity to do what's right for Newport Beach and not what's right for themselves.
Well, thank you guys for all being here tonight. I think for me, what I can offer the most is experience at a regional level and having connections at the federal level, the state level, the county level. There isn't a city in our county that I don't know a city council member of. So a lot of things that we're gonna be asked to do on this council is serve on regional boards, perhaps OCTA, the sanitation district, the toll roads, vector control. All of these things mean we can bring in dollars for Newport Beach and talk to other areas so that we can pull in resources. So I think that I have a lot of experience to offer. My mom and dad met each other at Newport Beach Police Department. My mom taught Chief Lewis how to write a parking ticket. So you know, some of these things we didn't talk about tonight, though, were public safety, no crime, recovery residences, homelessness. I have a 10-point plan on recovery residences that I'd love to share when it gets the appropriate time, maybe at the next forum. Housing is a big issue, quality of life issues related to parking and traffic and infrastructure. All those things didn't really get talked about tonight. We had a really good time, but I hope you guys stay engaged and are participants. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Amy?
Thank you, Ed. I got one of those phone calls last night that no parent wants to get, but it turned out okay. My daughter goes to Northeastern University and she called and said, "Mom, a bomb exploded on our campus, but I'm okay." These are the kind of, this is the kind of environment that we live in. And if we don't support our police and if it means raises, if it means recruiting more officers, I feel like crime is rising quickly and it's going to be one of the biggest issues facing our city in the next few years. We have an open border. There are so many kids dying of fentanyl overdoses, not just kids. And now we have the colored fentanyl and people are buying it thinking it's Adderall. We need to have a strong local government that supports every city, whether it's fire, police, everyone. We need to support them so they can do their jobs.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. As you may guess from my minimalist campaign, being a city council member is not something I actually covet or would feel really sad about not being. I think of this as volunteering to serve you. So if the question you are asking yourself is which of the options you have from District Three has the time and commitment to do the work that they need to serve you as you wish on the city council, look to my record. And if you have any doubt about my commitment to serving and researching things, I am the only candidate who will make a promise to post online an answer to every question that was asked here tonight, not just those asked of me. So you can review those answers at your leisure. They will be on my $12 website, jimmosher.com.
Thank you, Jim. Joe?
I mean, Ed, you're absolutely right. You may have changed the game in these forums, so congrats, terrific job. Thank you to Speak Up Newport. But first and foremost, thank you to all of you. It is not lost on me that this is local politics and you guys can be anywhere else on Wednesday night, but you choose to be here, getting engaged and involved in the city like Newport Beach. It is not by accident that Newport Beach is this utopia amongst California. It's because of incredible leadership and terrific current and previous city council leaders and so many community leaders just like you. I'm running to preserve the legacy of Newport Beach and continue serving the city that has been so good to me. I'm asking for your vote tonight. It's not a responsibility I take lightly. I can promise you, no one's gonna outwork me, no one's gonna be a better listener than me, and I can assure you by looking around the room that I know so many of you personally, we all share similar values. My vision, it's not a dream. It's one I've been living for the last 16 years. Please go to my website, stapletonfornewport.com, and together, we'll keep Newport, Newport. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Tom?
So I believe there's two important elements if you're going to run for public office. You have to have a passion for people and you have to be a servant leader. You have to learn how to serve before you can lead. And in my 60 years of life, by the way, I ask this at every forum, I turned 60 on November 8th, my birthday present is your vote, please, I beg of you. But it truly is, my passion is people. And when I first made the decision, I thought, it had to be my voice, this is about my voice. I have to have a voice. And my heart transitioned and I've come to realize it's not about my voice, it's about the voice of the people. And I'm gonna treat you, I said this at the last forum, I'm gonna treat you with respect regardless of your party affiliation, your sexual preference, or your religious beliefs. I'm gonna treat you as a human being, I'm gonna treat you as an American, I'm gonna treat you as a neighbor with the respect that you deserve. And for me to earn your vote is no greater gift for me. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Tom. So I've got a stack of questions here that came in from our Zoom people and we don't have time to ask them, so I'm gonna pass them out, pass them down. And I promised every one of them that you would individually answer their questions. Jim, I know you're good at that, so please answer those questions. You know, voting for your city council representative is one of the most important votes you're gonna make. It's the level of government that's closest to you. One of these three people is gonna be on the city council and they're gonna be a person that you can call up, most likely at home, and talk to them. Not gonna be able to do that at the state or the federal level, but these are the people that really are gonna have great impact on your lives. So be sure and get out and vote. I hope you found this informative. We tried to get more into who these people are and what their qualifications rather than dealing with issues that are being dealt with in other forums. And they all have position papers and websites where you can read more about them anyway. But let's give them a big hand for coming out here. It takes a lot of guts and courage to put yourself out like this, so you know, we really appreciate all of you, what you're doing, what you have done, and what you probably will be doing for the city in the future. So with that, we're gonna conclude. I just have one announcement, that October the 12th, we're gonna have another candidate's forum. It's gonna be for our state offices, Diane Dixon and Judy Mancuso for Assembly District 72, and Janet Nguyen and Kim Carr for the State Senate District Number 36. So you ought to come and see that, because I think that's gonna be a good program. With that, I'll bid you goodnight and... With that, I'll bid you good night, and remember, get out and vote.[1780.63][1780.63](APPLAUSE).[1781.63]